Good afternoon, and I'd like to call the Anchorage Election Commission meeting to order. And welcome all. It is January 11th, and it is eight minutes after two. Thank you. Can I ask you to do the roll call, Ms. Jamie? Yes. Ms. Ireland, present. Mr. Treadwell.
Here.
Ms. Nelson.
Here.
Mr. Lehman.
Here.
Ms. Torkelson. Ms. Torkelson was going to try to attend by telephone if she could break away from the train. Well, this day is absent now, and we can adjust the minutes when she's able to. All right, have we had the opportunity to put the minutes from the prior meetings?
I moved the adoption of the minutes with the actual results last June, 2022.
I second. Thank you, Ms. Nelson. Mr. Lehman proposed we adopt them, and Elaine Nelson seconded it. So are the all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much that the meetings are adopted. The old business? Election manual. Jamie, can you pass them on, please? What was the -- Ms. Jones, do you have?
I am up. So I'm going to pass out two documents to you. The first, the top document that we need to review is what I've called the manual as updated with final discussion items. So it has comments in the document, and we'll just go through those comments and make some decisions about how to proceed. The other document includes all of your edits and comments, and I really don't think we need to review that unless you want to, and it's for your reference, to go back and see that we did incorporate your edits. The last thing I'll say is it was a lot of edits. You know, most of them were minor grammatical stylistic edits, and of course, we accepted all of those. But if I did miss any, we can of course incorporate those in our last draft, and everybody can review the last draft one more time. We can email it and send it to you, and we can do a final review. I will add one other thing that you will see as we get into this. I know there was a code change that changed one section, so I think we're going to have to have Jamie and her team re-review the code and make sure that everything is current. And then she has a couple of staffing reviews that she's going to have to talk to staff. Can we do this? And if staff can do it, then she could update those changes. So that gives you the envelope. We'll pass them out, and then we can start making some sausage. If you want to do that one at the bottom, I'll do this one on the top.
Okay. So this is the one that is all of the edits that we potentially have to do. This is the one that we'll review.
Oh, okay. This is where we're not all of the edits that we potentially want to do.
Potentially not into that.
I trust you with the word.
Potentially not into that.
Okay, so as we start reviewing your manual, I will say first and foremost, thank you very much for your careful attention to this. I think this is really important, and we really appreciate your attention to it. So the first comments are on page four of the manual, and you can see there are some redline edits and some highlights. So the -- my notes say that the highlights are from Lauren Lehman, and I think the other -- they may have been by Lisa Torkelson as well, and some of them are also by G.I., which is Glenn Sireland. So the comment and recommendation here is uncertain. Since these are quotes from prior mission statements, we need to discuss with Quick Snap and the MOA elections core team to get approval to make these changes and then change the official documents. So the vision and mission statement belong to the election team, and so we need them to review this. And like if you've seen one of my emails or even our business cards, it might say like "vision statement 2.0." So it's been an updated vision statement. So I'm just recommending this be referred to Jamie and her team to update this, and then they can come back and say that they're going to update their vision or mission statement to, you know, 1.1 or whatever it is. Then they'll come back to you, and they can discuss the -- how to incorporate that into the election commission manual. Any comments or questions about that?
Senator Barbara, this is coming back to me on this. My comments, at least in this section, had more to do with consistency of the document, where as I read through it, I saw slightly different wording in different places than I -- I think my comments a year ago was, we ought to try at least as much as possible to be consistent through the document. I didn't think that any of these would be great, or it was to me in terms of how we issued the statement, it was just more of the desire to be as consistent as you can.
Thank you, and I hope I can just call each other, Mr. Lehman or Lauren. I think that's helpful that Jamie hears that at this meeting and knows what your position is so that she and her team can work on that consistency. If there are no other comments, we'll go to the next page, and that is page five. And this one also needs to be referred to Jamie. These also, you can see, are L edits, Lauren Lehman's edits, and they're grammatical edits, you know, to serve as the canvassing board and relating to elections. Unfortunately, those are quotes from the code, and so we need to either see if we updated the code, and if we didn't, we can add these to the code rewrite for, I guess it's 2023. So I would like to refer this also to Jamie. And then I missed deleting some of the edits. As you can see, there are a couple of comments at the bottom where it says, "G.I. recommend accept," and LT, that would be Lisa Torkelson, "recommend accept." And I just missed accepting those in this final document. Glenn has added an "and," and Lisa had an edit with "does he," and I just missed accepting those. Any comments on that page? Okay, now we are on page seven. On page seven, this was an edit recommended by Glenn Sireland, and the edit included two things. It included deleting if time permits, and then the next line said, "We'll include information about the date and time of the public session of Canvas," and so it is requesting, it says that it will require the team to include that information. It's not required by code, and we have that note there, but Glenn has recommended taking out the terms "if time permits." And all I'm saying is I have to have Jamie check with the review and resolution team and make sure that that's practical.
Could you try to -- could we try to consider that something to go through as well? I think we're going to have the mailing ballots, so we should do anything we can to offer the ability to cure. And thus, you know, if we could say that, I mean, the only thing about time permits, it's possible that, you know, we're about to do the Canvas, and something comes in an hour before. You know, we still send them a letter that says you have the right to cure, and we do get in. What do we do?
To the Chair, Jamie can help me with that, but you are exactly right, and that's why we have those terms "if time permits." The code requires us to send the opportunity to cure letter three days after we process the envelope, and we do that. And I don't think that we made any mistakes that I know of on not getting those cure letters out timely. The system works. However, did you roll your eyes at me, Mr. Treadwell?
The numbers were staggering.
Okay, I'm not going to talk to you about that. That's not what I said. You did roll your eyes at me.
I did roll your eyes about --
That's -- stop, please stop.
It was the numbers. I agree with what you had to say.
Okay, the answer is that we do send out the opportunity to cure letters. That number is not staggering, it's actually quite good. So however, and Jamie can clarify this for us, as you get closer and closer to the public session of Canvas, it is, it doesn't make sense sometimes to send opportunity to cure letters. For example, when we have an overseer, a realty voter. The other issue is if someone made a mistake, and they need to go to a vote center to correct the mistake, so I'm not sure, but I know that's the issue. Like, we get a duplicate ballot, so we have two ballots in the same envelope, and we receive that on Monday. There's nothing those voters can do. We can, we can't send them an opportunity to cure letter. There is no cure because they have to get to the vote center tomorrow. So the better thing that we're doing is Jamie has implemented the ballot tracks, and people are getting contemporaneous information that their ballot was received and was considered good, or it was received and challenged. So they would know that on Monday, and then they would know that they need to call or go to the vote center. So Jamie, could you help me out there? Are there some other reasons why we might not be able to get that opportunity to cure
Those are the ones that I can think of. Another one that I can think of is if a voter returned a ballot with no, or returning envelope with no ballot in it. It might be that earlier in the time frame, we're able to let them know, and then maybe go to a vote center to submit a ballot there. And then, of course, if they intend to do it, then we accept it. That is definitely considered. We give a great probability in those situations, but that's the other one I can do.
Senator, first off, my apologies for rolling my eyes at the wrong time. I agree with you, your letter system works based on that. My biggest question about this whole process is that we have rejected a lot of ballots, and I'm just hoping that either the ballot tracks, is ballot tracks automatic, or do they have, people have to sign up for it?
People have to sign up for it. The information comes to the cell phone number that they provide, the email address that they provide, or the phone that they --
And do they have to sign up for it online, or is it something you can check the box on the envelope and add your phone number?
They can, they have to sign up for a ballot track online. They're always welcome to call the vote center and ask the call center for the status.
All right, so maybe this is the wrong time to talk about it, but I guess what I'm hoping that we get to in the system is depending on the mailing ballots, is, you know, if you're at a vote center or a polling place, and somebody says, "Oh, you wear a check ballot," you can't give you that. Or your address has changed, you've got to get a question out for any of those reasons why somebody might be stuck in the question envelope. The mailing ballot, things become questionable when the mail comes here, and if somebody hasn't signed up their voter tracks, they may not know that in time if everything else is too late. And I can imagine a situation where, you know, things go out at four o'clock mail, but you found this at 11 o'clock, and you put it on voter tracks. That person could have come in before four o'clock that day, face anybody that has waited for mail, it's too late, we can't do it. So just wondering, can we do either an automatic choice of voter tracks on an envelope so that the email address and/or the phone number is there? Would you like us to let you know if there's any problem with this ballot? It will automatically sign you up for the voter track, should it be a, if it was a cell number or an email address? That, that may actually, it can't replace the mailed and cured thing, but it might be able to get the word out to more people. I'm just concerned because what I rolled my eyes at was not, was not the process, it's the number of the ballots we had to reject, that's all.
Jamie, I'll try and answer. So, you know, there's, there's, there's two things here, and Jamie can address ballot tracks more, but it's a, it's a service. It's no different. You sign up for a service and put in your password, and we can't do that for you, and Jamie can talk to you more about that. So, so, and the other part is, we let everybody know, we do let them know that is what the opportunity to cure letter is. Our cure rate is very high. That's the first thing. Jamie can address it. But, Mr. Treadwell, you said you rolled your eyes at the wrong time. You should not be rolling your eyes, period. I understand you disagree with vote by mail. Please keep your comments focused on vote by mail. At our last meeting, you brought up the high number of rejects. Jamie and I sent you a thoughtfully worded email about the rejects. The high number was around 1,400 ballots. Of those, over, you know, several hundred were postmarked too late, following the code. They weren't signed, following the code. You all voted to reject those ballots. The number is small, considering the state number. I'm happy to have this debate with you, but not at this time. This is not, I don't care if you have a resolution to get rid of vote by mail, that is not the issue, but I'm asking you, please, to be respectful and not interject these comments when they aren't germane to this topic.
Lisa, are you, did you really able to join us on this call?
Aye, yes, sorry, the, yeah, the training is, just went a little bit long. I thought I was going to get off at two, to 2:15, but we have 15 minutes, so you got me for 15 minutes, and then they're going to have to call me back.
Okay, I'll mark Ms. Torkelson in the meeting at 2:23. And then Lisa, I think you can just give us a little interruption, if you, when you're signing off, and I'll just make both the time, okay?
I'm sorry, it's hard to hear.
If you just, just say that you're signing off, when you're signing off, I will, I will just make a quick note, and you can go, and I'll just note what time you had to leave for the minutes.
Okay, all right. All right, thank you.
As far as ballot tracks goes, Ms. Jones is correct, that ballot tracks operates as an account that you have to sign up for. Folks can again call our call center and get that information from, from us about the status of their ballot. There's other options for people to, there's other options available to us, which we can, we can do more research on and look into obtaining for our voters. Oh, I was going to say something that slipped my mind. Oh, we do provide information on how to sign up for ballot tracks on the ballot, on the ballot, I think it's on the ballot return envelope and the instructions that we send to every voter. So on the instructions on the backside where the vote centers, there's information on how to sign up for ballot tracks, and then it's also on the envelope itself. So we do try to communicate. We have a web page dedicated to it. I do press releases that talk about it. I try to get that information out to them, that it's a service available to them.
And Jamie, I just remembered this. Anyone that signs up for ballot tracks with the State of Alaska is automatically signed up with the municipality of Anchorage, so that's really increased the number of people too, is that right?
It did, yes.
So if we'd like to move on to the next page, that would be page eight. This concerns holding the public session of Canvas. So in this section, there was a recommended edit from Glenn Sireland regarding the envelope was not properly completed, and actually, the code says that the ballot was not properly cast. So I left that because I think Jamie needs to check the code as well as the observer's manual. I want to make sure that if an observer is challenging because the ballot has not been properly cast, the commission manual doesn't say something different. We want to make sure that the observer is challenging and that it's the same in both the commission's manual and the observer manual. The observer manual is adopted by the assembly, so we have to follow that, or we have to go change the, we can change the observer, the assembly can change the observer manual by resolution. So Jamie, we'll defer that one to you. In the next section, these were recommended by Lauren Lehman again, and I, I said the parenthetical in that second sub-bullet where it says the municipal or clerk or designee will have available challenge forms from the observer manual. I am asking Jamie to check that. I think I'm saying the parenthetical isn't in code, so that could be changed, but Jamie, I think I need you to check that. Would that be okay?
Yeah, well, I don't have any problem with checking that. The reason for my suggestion has to do with, I've been involved with lots of contract language in my years as an engineer, and a consistency is when you're talking about an owner's responsibility, the tradition is to use will, if talking about contractor's responsibility, it's somebody else when you shall. And that's just been something that I've dealt with, and I just thought, rather than flipping them here, if we use some consistency here, might be good.
To the Chair, Mr. Lehman, I, let me offer this for you. You said that the, you use shall for the contractor.
Right.
So I'm going to recommend that you use shall for the clerk or designee or the municipality. We're the ones that have the duty to the voters. So I think it is a mandatory duty, and in interpretation of municipal law, Dean Gates is Assembly Council, and I have learned over the years from him that, you know, shall is language that makes action mandatory as long as there's a consequence. So the clerk shall segregate these ballot envelopes, right? It says that, but there's no consequence if you don't. So it's different if it says, I think some of you know I used to work for a board or commission where it said, "The commission shall complete the decision by within 180 days, and if it doesn't, then someone can file a lawsuit in court." And so that's a different type of a shall, so there's those two types of shall in municipal law, but where we have shals, we need to leave those shals because those are mandatory duties for the clerk or our, the election team. I would, I think that Mr. Gates might, and Mr. Wheeler, who used to be municipal attorney, told me that you need to be more careful when you have voters shall, and if you have voters shall, those are, those are different as well. But I don't know the interpretation of that well enough to talk to you about it, but I do know that some of those, and so is that what you're trying to do? Have voters shall and the clerk will?
At the time I made the comment, that was what I intended. After listening to you and some of the other interpretation about the obligation to the voter, it sort of, it might change, well, certainly helps me understand that, that we may not have just been careless with the exchange of the words, but it may have been very thoughtful. And if so, that's, this is not something I'm going to bring my pick on. I just, I just noted it because as I review contract language with the type of work that I do, I've seen some consistency there, and so I pointed it out. I don't have a problem if, if the, you know, if you know, or if municipal attorney doesn't want to do it, I, I still understand the direction.
Got it, thank you.
Senator, we've got the shall and will a couple of places later where we are required in one way or the other to do something. In this case, I almost drop out shall and will and just say, the municipal clerk or designee may have available challenge forms in the observer's manual. The reason why I would recommend that is because the law says an observer can make a challenge, and if they don't do it on their form, I don't want somebody saying, "You won't go to this challenge because you didn't do it on a form." The law says you can challenge it that way, and I just don't want that to be a disqualification. You can say you may have them available, and for some reason you don't have them available. Uh, you can say, you may have them available, and for some reason you don't have them available, print broke or something like that, uh, and I don't want that to be something that takes somebody's right to challenge you there. So, that's, that's just my thought on, on the "will shall" issue, on this issue, right? I, I think Laura's point and your point are totally germane when it comes to the stuff later on.
To the chair, um, Mr. Torcelson, I am gonna quibble with you a little bit about "may" or "shall" here, because I think this is super important, that the clerk shall have these forms available for the public. This is to make it easier for them, and so, so if it was permissive, "may," you're in the case where, pick up your L form, you know, and I don't think that's what the goal is. I also think that the observer's manual may require those forms to be available to the public. So, this is making it easier for them. They don't have to use the form, we accepted several emails last year, there's, so, I'm just letting you know that this isn't, you're absolutely correct, that they are not required to use the form, and that if a, a challenge came, and Jamie's gonna check me on that, if a challenge came in not on a form, like an email, you got letters last year, the omnibus challenge, of course you accepted that, so, um, but I think this might be different, that we're trying to help them understand what information you need to address a challenge.
Madam Chair, I'm not, this is not a quibble, I, I back you up, but some, yeah, it's not a quibble, I, I back you up. And, I, I'm happy to say that we will, but I, maybe what you also might add to that parenthetical is while, while challenges are not required on the form, the clerk will make a form available through the observer's handle. Uh, and, and just by doing that, you leave, you know, we, we were very flexible in receiving challenges last April, um, and maybe in June, I, I need to tend, but the point, the point being is, uh, I don't, I don't want anybody to, to, I, I've had, well, you and I sat through an assembly meeting two weeks ago where, where, uh, certain words and conditions weren't considered because they weren't on the right form, and, or, yeah, and, and I just,
In the right form.
Yeah, yeah, in the right form, but anyway, I just don't wanna create a cause for action against you if, if for some reason the print breaks.
So, first of all, there's lots of printers in municipality, and I think that, that, uh, I, I, I don't think that's okay, sorry. You know, we can't, we can't say that, that the printer was broken, but something more serious. Um, I am going to say that we should recommend, and I want Jamie to look into this for you, that we not do that. You know, first of all, it really helps, I think you saw how busy we were during that time period, and that there were over 40 complaints or challenges filed. It was technically overwhelming us. We are evaluating what this means, um, for staffing for this coming election. This small group of people cannot manage 40 challenges per election. So, so that's one issue that we have. Having them on the same form makes it a little bit more manageable. So, my request and recommendation is that we leave this language the same as long as Jamie checks and makes sure that it's consistent with the observer's manual. However, as you have indicated, both the commission and the elections team can't accept a challenge not on the form. In other words, this is one of my favorite parts of code, if it's not prohibited, it's allowed.
Madam Chair, in the minutes for this meeting, could the clerk's statement that we can accept challenges on other things be included in the minutes?
Jamie, you need to address that.
I, I wish that I would've brought my, uh, my form over, uh, this commission is subject to Robert's rules, and Robert's rules indicates that our minutes are action-only minutes. We, we purely track emotion, have, track motions and, uh, votes and who spoke, not what they said.
So, for this, let's have Jamie get back to you, and, um, we can resolve this after we find out how this, uh, squares with the observer manual. On the next page, on page eight, or page nine, I'm sorry, it's the exact same, um, issue. It's a "shall" versus, um, not "shall," and I'm gonna have, um, I'm recommending not accepting that, we'll have Jamie take a look at that, if that's okay.
And I would just say, on, on all of them, instead of just not accepting all of them or, or accepting all of them, just use judgment on, on if it improves the, the flow without violating the code or, or municipal practice, you might accept it, if it doesn't, don't accept it.
Okay, that's great direction, thank you, Lauren. Now, I, um, on page 10, on this section, I, I left a comment because I thought it was pretty important. Um, Glynis Ireland recommended changing the title to state. Um, it says "election certification report," and she wanted to add "election commission report," and then we were gonna delete "public session of canvas," but I am proposing adding "on public session of canvas." I think we were, we were struggling there because who knows what the public session of canvas is, most people don't. So, instead of saying "election commission, public session of canvas report," we thought we would say, and I'm recommending "election commission report on public session of canvas." So, you can think about that, let me know if that works for you. Um, at the bottom of the page, there was a question, um, "ballot envelope received too late," and the question was, "Isn't this the same as not dated, postmarked, received after Election Day?" And, um, the answer was, "Not exactly." Um, and then I've listed that explanation there. So, the bottom line is we wanna differentiate between envelopes that are not dated, not postmarked, and those that are postmarked after Election Day. Um, and, and that's basically what that information is trying to detail. On the next page, on page 11, um, Glynis Ireland recommended deleting a sentence that said, and, and just give, let me give you the envelope here, what this section says is, "The clerk prepares the election certification report, and we also prepare the commission's report on the public session of canvas," and then it says that the commission signs the, um, report on the public session of canvas, and we attach those two together and submit them to the assembly for certification. So, um, and, and that's the way it's worked ever since I've been here. Um, Glynis recommended deleting this section. If the election commission prepares its own report, it must be, it must submit the report to the clerk no later than the close of business on the day prior to the certification meeting of the Anchorage Assembly. And I left that in because I think that's a power that the commission has. You don't have to submit your report to the clerk. I admit it was a little dicey at the last, um, public session of canvas, you know, where you were meeting at 2:00 or 3:00 o'clock in the afternoon, and we were running back and forth trying to finalize your report and make edits to your report, and print those and get to the assembly meeting by 5:00. So, um, I wanna make sure that if the commission, I, I think personally, and, and in my professional cap- capacity, that if the commission wants to tell the commission or the assembly something differently, and you don't wanna attach the canvas report, that you have that power, and I don't wanna take that out of this manual. That's my recommendation.
I, I agree, uh, I doubt that, well, I can't imagine that happening, but I guess if it, if it does, I'd rather retain that ability to do it by the commission or some future commissions.
Thank you, Mr. Lehman, I, I think in 2012, which was before I was the clerk, it would've been the 2012 election where there were, um, sh- short ballots at a, a large number of the creasings. I do believe that the election commission may have done separate reports to the, um, to the assembly, but it was kind of odd because some of them might've been like, it, it was, it was just different. So, I don't think we have a record of that, but again, I, I think that's a good idea to preserve that. So, we're gonna go ahead and, and reject this change unless there's any other objection.
Uh, sorry to interrupt, this is Lisa Torcelson. Um, my class has started again, so I have to go, so I apologize for not being available. Ugh, too many duties called.
Thank you for joining us, Lisa.
Alright, thank you.
So, I am now on page 13, and this was just a comment. There was a question about what is a household signature? And so, I just provided this explanation that a household signature is when a member of a household inadvertently swaps ballot envelopes, um, because each ballot envelope is unique to that voter. And then I provided the explanation that, you know, we'll hold the ballot envelope for a day, and then hope that the other household member's envelope comes in, and then we just swap them and process them. But I also am letting you know that if the other one doesn't come in, we still put the correct label and barcode on it and process it. So, even if someone makes a mistake on, um, using a different household member's envelope, that is not a reason for rejecting a ballot envelope. You can even use your roommates, and we can figure that out, so. And then, now we are on the page four, uh, page 15, we're starting to talk about count, no count guidelines. And, um, I highlighted this note on page 15 because, um, Jamie, I need you to check the code. And do you wanna mention how we changed this in the code, which hopefully helps the commission?
Yes, um, in January of 2022, uh, the code was changed to allow voters from overseas to come, um, to arrive up to the day of certification. And, and then it required you to essentially meet twice. You met, um, the first time to handle the majority, and then, um, in the event we needed to reject a military and overseas ballot, um, that came in before the day of certification, we were gonna need you to meet again and to reject that ballot. Um, we have changed that code, that military and overseas ballots aren't due at the same time as the rest of the ballots. And the reason for that is because we mail military and overseas ballots, uh, about 10 days before we mail everyone else's, so they already have additional time. Um, and as a matter of what happened in the two elections in 2022, we did not receive any military and overseas ballots after your public sessions of canvas. So, what this, what this does is, it gives us an opportunity to do a risk-limiting audit after the public session of canvas and before certification to satisfy, uh, something that the observers brought up, that we weren't doing an audit of the election prior to certification. So, um, it didn't disenfranchise any, any newocava voters, and we're gonna focus on another, um, issue that, that I believe that the voters are, are looking for.
So, Madam Chair, so, was the code changed, or you're saying this is a code change that you're trying to do, or it's just our, a different interpretation of the code?
The code was changed in December 6th, this is the day it became effective.
Yeah, thank you. May I ask one other question?
Yes, I, I would just like to say, we think this change is good for you, there's just no reason for you to meet twice. You know, that last meeting is just, yeah, thank you.
I question that. Um, in the list of reasons why we would reject a vote, uh, not on the count, no count guideline, it's on 15, but, was that earlier? Um, on page 10, one of them is that voter is deceased. And I guess when does a voter have to die to not have his or her vote counted? And when do you have to find out about it? And, um, I, I'm just thinking, my wife cast an absentee ballot before she died in 2002, and I believe it was counted, even though it was very public news, and she died, and I, I guess what I'm, just wondering is what's the, what's the general procedure?
We, we follow Alaska state law on that issue, and in Alaska, if a voter casts their ballot and, and dies before Election Day, it was a validly cast ballot, so it counts. That's the same standard for us. The, the issue here is if the voter was deceased before, and it would, it would probably be the 21 days before the election for us, or if, if a voter, like, even requested an absentee ballot with the state, like, they request the ballot in, um, August, because they know they're gonna be gone in November, and that ballot is issued but not voted, that, that, they, that can't count. You know, because they died before the, they voted, or, you know, they may have requested the ballot, and so those, for those voters, they got a ballot, but they're, they died before it was cast, and so they have that XX designation, but we might end up getting that ballot back. So, all we have to do is check when they died or when the state entered that into the system. And as long as it's before voting started, it is not counted. If they voted after voting started, it counts.
Okay, but not after, alright, so, um, so if they're not, if they shouldn't have been eligible to get a ballot, then, then they should, then the ballot shouldn't be counted. If they were eligible to get a ballot up until midnight Election Day, um, that ballot can be counted if it was cast properly.
Correct.
Okay, and I guess- And I guess my suggestion is, I don't know if this is, it takes longer straight for a code, but you might want to explain that. It wasn't one of the suggestions, but you might want to... Voter is deceased before, you know, before ballots were available or something along those lines, before voting began.
Jamie, could you look at the State's Reject Code? We don't have it in this on the next couple of pages. But if you could just check the State's Reject Code and have us copy whatever they say for that?
Yes. I will point out that the State's is on page 12 and 13. And what this is indicating is what is included in the report of the public session of campus. And so I think we could likely do a little bit more explanation there to explain it a little bit better since that ultimately becomes a public record. Is that your interpretation?
Thanks, Jamie. The other thing I'd like to comment on page 15 about newocava, we're going to come up to it later. Someone asked me, oh, what are the questions in the comments? Well, what about UPS or FedEx? And you can see that we're saying U.S. Postal Service or other mail distributor. So we can receive envelopes from anyone. They can go in the Dropbox. They can go to the Vote Center. They can be in the mail or a different mail distributor. So I just wanted to make sure someone asked that question later in the comments. And I just wanted to let you know that's in the code. And then the last changes were on page 17. And sorry, I left all that formatting stuff in there. But Glenna Sireland asked me to add this clarification about what the election reports were. And so the clerk's election report is required to include the final results of the election. And there's other information, and that's detailed in another page. It's on page 10. It says what the clerk's office can include in the report, that the results are required. And then it talks about what the Election Commission can include in its report. And this is where it says that it needs to be voted on and approved and signed by a forum of the Commission members. On the next page, on page 8...
Barbara?
Oh, yes.
I apologize. We are four minutes from our required end, so I think we need a motion to extend.
I move the extended Commission meeting to 3:30.
Second. Second.
Are there objections to moving it to extending to 3:30 p.m.? No. No, thank you.
Thank you, Jamie. I am on page 18. There was a question about what is a facsimile ballot. And so I copied the definition from the code, and this is a new definition. It means an exact copy. And then I provided some information to you about when we would use facsimile ballots. So that's in the little box there. At the bottom, there is information about question ballot envelope. And Lisa Torkelson made these, and I am recommending not accepting these changes. And you can see there's a couple of issues. The question ballot envelope has to, it has to contain a complete ballot package. And we use the term "security sleeve", not "security envelope". And so these are from the code. So I'm just recommending that we leave this the way it was, the way the code read. And if the code is bad, Jamie, maybe you could make a note for us to update the language in the code for question ballot or question ballot envelope.
Madam Chair, a question ballot is voted at the Vote Center. Okay? If it's in the wrong kind of envelope, I believe that's probably an error by the election staff rather than by the voter. And I think what Lisa was getting at, or at least what I suspect she was getting at, is that because of a clerical error on the part of municipal staff, that that voter shouldn't be disenfranchised. And I know you're reflecting what the code says. I'm just wondering, is there any way that, you know, if you have a newbie or somebody makes a mistake, you don't want to be accused of deliberately putting something in the wrong envelope so some sort of vote isn't counted? That's all I'm getting at, Madam Chair.
So let's take a look at the language here. So this is a definition of question ballot envelope. And I'm going to read it the way it was. It says, "A question envelope is", this is a list of terms, "it's the envelope containing a completed ballot return envelope with question ballot." So inside a secrecy sleeve. I can, I think it looks like some of that is at it. But it, so the answer, Mr. Treadwell, is it's an envelope. It doesn't matter what kind of an envelope it is. You're absolutely right. It can be one of our beautiful question ballot envelopes, or it could be any other type of envelope. So all this is doing is saying that a question ballot envelope contains a completed ballot envelope with... And the real issue is that there's some other problem here, but the whole package has to be inside the envelope. I think we can ask Jamie to take a look at this a little bit more. But I think the issue is it doesn't define what that question envelope looks like. So we're not going to reject someone because it's in the wrong envelope. We have to have all the information, but they could put it in a special needs envelope.
Yeah, I would agree. I would say that as a matter of practice, our chairs are typically the ones that run the questioned ballot processes in the Vote Centers. And for some crazy reason, they ran out of questioned envelopes. They could use a special needs envelope and scratch out special needs and write questioned so that, just so that it got separated somehow and let us know. I think we would certainly not disenfranchise a voter for that reason.
Okay, our next one is on page 19, and this is scanning of ballots. And this was a change that Glenn has recommended. And I accepted the first half of it, but I just have to tell you, I highlighted the second half because I don't know what I wrote there. So Jamie, if you could look this up for us. I think the first half, scanning of ballots. Ballots may be scanned beginning seven days prior to Election Day. We're citing code. However, scanned ballots are not tabulated or tallied in the races measures or measures on the ballot to produce results before 8 o'clock p.m. So Glenn asked about the term "tabulated", so I used the definition from the code, which is to tally the races or measures on the ballots to produce results. So I think that clarifies that we are going to be scanning a week before Election Day, and that's important because we could produce results on Election night if we didn't start at a time. But the rest of that, I just don't know what that means. It doesn't make sense to me, and I couldn't remember why I put it there.
So you're taking that out?
I think we should take that out because it doesn't make sense to me. But I don't know why it's there, so I thought I'd have Jamie look at that for us.
Yeah, I mean, under scanning of ballots, maybe what you want to say through chair is that, in county quotes, "ballots may be scanned beginning seven days prior to Election Day", and that, you know, that language, period. And then if it turns out you need something from that paragraph, you might want to have something that says "testing of tabulation equipment before Election Day is not subject to observation. Testing of tabulation equipment after Election Day is", or something along those lines, just to avoid kind of the problem that we had, you know, with the IT guy showing up in the middle of county. But, I mean, essentially, this says you can test your equipment, and frankly, I think we all hope you do. So I don't see a problem with... If you need it in there to allow that, that's fine. But just, you know, I think the idea of testing the IT lawyer in the middle of scanning may be problematic for some observers again. That's all.
To the chair, I, and I expect that maybe the old scanning of ballots said this. I think the new definition that Glenn has added makes more sense. And I'm just going to recommend that Jamie review that and then possibly take it out.
Through the chair, I'll review it. I wonder if this was added prior to, when the system was new to us and we weren't always sure what would kick out as being, you know, red or purple or yellow pen or the crossing out of the votes. But I think having used the system this many years now and having conducted risk-limiting audits and getting perfect results, I think that, I think that can likely come out. But I will...
Thank you. I'd also like to address your other comment. Mr. Treadwell, you said something about testing not being open to public observation. I think that that must be a misunderstanding. Testing is open to public observation. We invite the public. The logic and accuracy testing is the pre-election testing. Risk-limiting audit is post-election testing. Both were publicly noticed. And the Commission, of course, is invited to participate in both of those, and I believe did. Jamie can confirm this, but all of the observers were invited to the risk-limiting audit. And so I think there may be a little misunderstanding about... You made a comment about the IT guy showing up. I think the issue there, Mr. Treadwell, is that Commission members participate. You get to touch ballots. You get to scan ballots. You get to, you marked on ballots. The public is not allowed to do that because you are election officials. Similarly, with observers. Observers sign confidentiality agreements. They've done the training. They've agreed to the terms of the manual. So the observers get to stand on the Xs that are outside of the yellow brick road. People who don't fit in those categories are just members of the public, and they just have to stay on the yellow brick road. That's what the issue is. Okay, that's it.
Thank you very much, Barbara. That went well. Now we come to new business, and that's the nominating of a chair and a vice chair for this Commission.
Do you want to turn this over to Jamie, and then Jamie can solicit nominations for you?
Yes, I think that's a good idea. Thank you, Jamie. Thank you, Ms. Ireland. On nomination of the chair, are there any nominations for the seat of chair? Mr. Lehman?
I nominate Lisa Torkelson.
Are there any other nominations for chair?
I nominate Mr. Lehman.
Are there any other nominations for chair? I will get a ballot.
Could we have a discussion? Let's open this decision.
I think somebody just joined.
Can the person who joined us on the phone identify themselves, please?
Yeah, Lisa Torkelson.
Oh, hi, Lisa.
I'm skipping class.
Oh, okay.
My comment is I appreciate Glenn's nomination. I'm willing to serve as vice chair and fill in as needed if it ever is, as I did with you. And I know, you know, I guess from my perspective, I happen to be a Commission member. I don't feel like I need to chair it. I think highly of, well, I think highly of everybody on this Commission, but I look at the background that Lisa has in elections, and I just think she's a super talented servant. So this may be the, that remains there. Maybe the first time I put it against myself.
Could I make a comment?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear who that was.
The seat line. I'd like to make a comment.
Go ahead.
My comment is that Lisa, due to her job, is not available readily where Lauren Lehman is. So I would not recommend Lisa, just due to her availability.
Thank you. We have ballots here, and I'm going to ask Barbara for a procedural answer. Ms. Torkelson's on the phone. Do we need to call her, or do we take her vote verbally?
I think it's up to her, but we can call.
Okay, Lisa, do you want to... We're going to pass out ballots here. And then the question is, do you want to vote verbally, or would you like for Amy to call you and fill out a ballot for you?
Sorry, what are the options?
Can you turn her... The option is to either...
We can call you to get your vote for the chair. And the nominees are Lauren Lehman and yourself. Or you can vote verbally if you want to.
Audibly?
Yes.
I'll just vote verbally. It'll be easier.
Okay, wait until we get the other ballots, and then we'll have you vote.
They can all wear names. Oh, we don't have to.
Yeah.
I'm getting my processes next up.
The Assembly is a secret ballot, and you have to sign your name in...
No, no. In appointment processes, which is what I was involved in last Friday.
Yes.
I have to sign their names.
For a vacancy, but not for chair.
But not for chair.
Okay, so...
Okay, Lisa, you can go ahead and announce who your vote is for.
For chair, right?
Correct.
Yeah, myself, Lisa.
Okay, Lisa Torkelson votes Lisa Torkelson chair. Okay, Lisa Torkelson votes, Lisa Torkelson, Chair. I have three votes for Lisa Torkelson and two votes for Lauren Lehman, and so Lisa Torkelson has been elected as Chair. I'm writing it down for the minutes. And we will now move on to Vice Chair. Nominations are open for the seat of Vice Chair. Are there any nominations for Vice Chair?
Elaine. I nominate Lauren Lehman.
I nominate Lauren Lehman.
Elaine has nominated Lauren Lehman.
Second.
Are there any other nominations for Vice Chair? Mr. Lehman, do you have any objections to serving as Vice Chair?
I don't, I'm willing to do that.
So with no other nominations and Mr. Lehman's willingness to do so, Mr. Lehman is elected as Chair, Vice Chair, I apologize. And that brings us back to the agenda, reviewing the 2023 election calendar. Ms. Torkelson, I have a calendar in front of me, and I'm happy to run through that calendar if that is what you, as our new Chair, would like for me to do.
That's fine, go ahead. I'm sorry, but I'm going to have to go back to class. So can I turn it over to Lauren?
Yes.
Let's please skim through this calendar, and that would be fine.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. You're leaving us again at 3:15, is that correct?
Yeah, I need to go.
Thank you.
Just on a matter of procedure, I'm happy to let Glenn finish out sharing this meeting and take over after that. It's fine with me. What's the process? Once the election's over, it's immediate? What's the tradition? Okay, I'll take it.
So I will quickly run through some quick dates. Filing for office for the regular election opens this Friday at 8:00 a.m. Tomorrow at 1:00 p.m., we are doing our letter drawing, where we draw our gravel letters and indicate how names will appear, both on our website and on the ballot. The public is welcome to attend that. A press release has gone out about that. Filing for office closes on January 27th. The last day for candidates to withdraw is January 31st. And the last day for public hearing on ordinances containing ballot proposition language is Tuesday, January 24th. Logic and accuracy testing is being conducted on March 2nd, 2023, and we will send you an invite to that. The last day to register or update voter registration for our regular election is Sunday, March 5th. Ballot packages will be mailed to qualified encourage voters on Tuesday, March 14th, and that is also the day that our secure drop boxes are opened. Monday, 27th of March is the day that the vote centers are open. That is Seward's Day, it's a holiday for us, but our team opens, still opens our vote centers on that day. April 4th is Election Day, and we have already scheduled your public session and canvas meeting for April 20th. Thank you for that. And then the intent is to run a risk limiting audit on Friday, the 21st, so that we can have all of our documents ready for the assembly meeting on Tuesday, the 25th. That is the end of the election calendar.
Any questions, Jamie? Any other objections? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
That included the review of the meeting and training calendar, or what's that different?
The only next meeting that we have scheduled for you at this point is the April 20th election, or public session and canvas meeting. I will do the reviews of the Election Commission manual and reach out to see if it's determined that another meeting needs to take place. And if you'd like, I can provide some dates from our training calendar. If anybody wanted to attend, otherwise I can send training dates to the commission members, and if you wanted to attend any of those trainings, you're certainly welcome to do that.
Okay, would you please send those out, as long as we decide if we want to attend or need to? Thank you.
I will send that email, and I also wanted to add that a great time to finalize that Election Commission manual could be on March 2nd, if the commission was intending to come and be a part of that logic and accuracy testing on that day.
Commissioners, does that sound okay? I was going to ask about final action on that, if we were ready to take that today or we hold that off until March 2nd. And we can do that? Doesn't hurt anything.
So hold it off till March 2nd? That does not hurt anything.
That'll be okay?
Yeah.
All right. So you believe it's a good idea? Because I was prepared to move to approve it, something to, well, we had you review today. I think it's simple enough.
That'd be nice.
You have the enhancer?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Chair. Mr. Tredwell, I, before you have that obvious motion, I mean, that overarching motion, I had, I had a motion I was going to offer now in chairing, what is Rocker's rule saying? Can the Chair offer a motion?
Yes.
Oh, good. I move that the comments that Municipal Clerk Barbara made about accepting a challenge on a form other than the standard election form would be accepted. I move that those comments be included in the minutes for, under our discussion of the municipal election meeting. A second. And if I might add, those were good comments, and I appreciate that that is what you do. I listen carefully, and I believe in all cases, you're, you want to conduct honorable elections, but you're erring on the side of just making sure we get votes from legitimate voters, and I appreciate that. Is there any?
That's our mission.
I know. Thanks for doing it. Any objection to the motion? Was there a second? I heard you, oh, yeah, Mr. Tredwell? Any objection? Hearing done, the motion carries. That brings us to the motion on approval of the manual, Mr. Tredwell. Mr. Chair, I move that the commission approve the spirit of the amendments in the manual shown to us today, or approve the, let me make more system. I move that we approve the manual subject to the legal reviews that we directed the FBI clerk, or the election administrator, to conduct before publication. Is there a second?
I second.
Mr. Chair, could I ask that you include in that motion any other minor typographical edits like deputy clerk, if we mistakenly included that in the manual?
I'm happy with that as a friendly amendment. Are you happy as second?
Yes, I am.
Without objection, that would be included in that motion. Any objection to the full motion? Without objection, motion carries. Brings us to member comments. Mr. Tredwell? Mr. Chair, we have an election season coming up, and because I've been active in elections in the past, I'm often asked by candidates and prospective candidates to give them support. I just want to state publicly that whenever anybody begins such a conversation, I let them know I'm a member of the Election Commission, can have no activity on their campaign, cannot and will not advise their campaign, wish them good luck, and terminate the conversations as quickly as possible. That's now happened with two candidates who are likely to file this week. I don't consider myself partial toward either one of them, and I just wanted to state for the record that that's, that has happened to me now twice with this upcoming election. Thank you. Any other member comments?
I would just like to make a comment. Our member Elaine finishes up her term with us today, and I would like to thank her for her service and her faithful carrying out of her duties. Thank you, Elaine.
I join in that remark, and I've known Elaine for a long time, longer than I've been on this commission, and I appreciate her involvement in the community this term, raising the family, and so many things that we can applaud. And Glenn, thank you for serving on this commission, and thank you for chairing it for this past year. I really appreciate it, and thanks for, I guess, your confidence in me to be Vice Chair, and hope they serve you well, and I'm confident that Lisa will as well. Any other, any other comments? I don't see any member of the public. No public comments were adjourned at four minutes before our deadline.